Protect the neighborhoods and you're going to do what's right for the taxpayers. This is your opportunity to talk, not only to talk, to talk, but to walk, to walk. I urge you to reconsider or to consider a no vote on the proposed amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lisa Gorgon.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm the Vice President of Clinical Operations at GCMC and I just want to say we're here for the rezoning of the Audubon School and I'm here to present on what Geisinger Health System has done, is doing for the community. We've invested over $158 million into Scranton. We are continuing to be focused on quality, patient care, and build program, expanding our trauma program, neurosurgery, hospitalist program, and continue to be focused on our patients. This school is going to give us the opportunity with the rezoning, if this takes place today, to have a staging area for the construction that is taking place currently now at the CMC site. We ask that this rezoning goes through. Again, we do not have plans for this area at this time. If the rezoning does go through, we would have to come back to you on what those plans are going to be. So currently, there is no plan for the school when it is, if it does come down. And again, we're here for the community, we're here for our patients, and to bring quality and service excellence to this area.
Thank you. Mr. and Mrs. Sandown? Robert Markowski?
My name is Robert Markowski. I'm the Associate Vice President of Facilities Administration for the Geisinger Healthcare System. And just a couple of brief points on this matter. First of all, thank you for the opportunity. We as Geisinger, you know, did not actively seek out the school district to purchase or potentially purchase this property. It was advertised in a public auction late 2012 and Geisinger saw the need that this could be a strategic addition. So we attended the public hearing, or excuse me, we attended the public auction and we turned out to be the successful bidder. As part of that, we requested in the agreement of sale that this be rezoned to institutional G. Currently, as a school, you know, it doesn't really meet the current qualifications for any zoning under the Act. They think it would revert to an R1A medium density when it does change hands. And, you know, we don't have any immediate plans for development of that site. We've gone on record since the public auction, excuse me, that we, our intent would be if we acquired the building to raise it, possibly use it as a staging area for the construction project. And after the project, we would restore it to a green space until such time as we had future development needs on that site. We're being very transparent. We do not have an approved project. We haven't even looked at any planning for that area. But I think it's important to reiterate that if we did ever want to pursue development on that site, we would have to go through the Planning Commission and the City Zoning Board irregardless of the institutional G zoning. As you're well aware, there's certain restrictions, requirements that we have to meet. So, you know, there's no, there's no sleight of hand here. We're being very transparent. It's too early to tell. We're in the midst of a $97 million expansion project. It's going to add significant square footage to the campus. We really have to see, when all is said and done, what the needs are, if there's any future needs, and if there's any funding available to develop that site. So that's really the, you know, the driver of why we don't have any, or we can't say that we have any definite plans because we don't want to mislead anyone. We, we're being totally transparent. We, at this time, have no project and probably for the foreseeable future, we have no development planned for that land. So, and, you know, I do think it's important that because of that, currently, that property is not on the tax roll. So if this transaction does take place and we acquire it, it will go on the tax rolls and it will become a taxable entity and it will stay taxable until that time that we do apply for an erect building that meets the tax exempt criteria. Now, that doesn't mean that any Geisinger building meets that criteria. You know, for instance, the new building that just opened down at Mount Pleasant, that's not a tax exempt entity. Depends on what services you offer there. And right now, as we've said, at the Planning Commission, you know, if we were to assess needs right now, at this point in time, it looks like it would be medical office, outpatient, ancillary services. With that, we'd have to provide the adequate parking as required by zoning on that site to support that. And, you know, that is not necessarily an extension of the hospital. Those are different services that support the hospital. However, due to some of the complexities of that, they necessarily don't work well if they are remote from the hospital site. They do need to be proximal to the hospital campus to serve that purpose. So there really is a brief summary of why we're here tonight requesting this. I won't take any more of your time, but I do thank you for your time and your attention and hope you would consider our request.
Thank you. Mary Beth, and I can't, I'm sorry, I'm the last name. I don't want to mispronounce.
Hi.
I'm sorry.
My name is Mary Beth Michael-Achak. I live in the 400 block of Arthur Avenue since 1982. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but I'll just tell you my opinion and how I feel. I just think if they come over to our side, that like Mr. Skakidi said, it's just going to be a matter of time before there's buildings surrounding you. And I know now, just with the construction site now, we have trouble with the parking. You know, we have construction trucks, we have everything on Arthur Avenue. And I think there was one time in the winter where there was like seven, seven vehicles, trucks from the construction on our street. And we're supposed to be residential and we're paying for permits. So what are you going to do with parking if you start putting huge buildings up there? And I'm actually right across from the school and I'm concerned that if that school gets torn down, if there's mold in there, and what's, what's going to become of all of that? And then you're going to put trucks and more dirt and dust and noise and everything like that. And our residential area is just not going to be residential anymore. It's now, it's loud in the morning. I mean, they're supposed to start, I believe, at seven o'clock and you've got 20 to seven, you know, it's just quarter to seven, you just start hearing noise all morning. So if you allow them to come over, you're just going to have more noise, more dirt, more parking problems. And I would actually like to keep our side of Arthur residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, again, I having difficulty reading the name. Charles maybe, K-R-Y?
Mr. Clark, I'm going to speak.
Okay, thank you. Samuel Clark? Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address counsel?
I'm Simon.
Please.
Hello, my name is Sally Barrett, 437 Arthur Avenue. I'm a resident for 27, 28 years and we have a wonderful neighborhood, beautiful, beautiful homes. We've spent a tremendous amount of money. And since Geisinger started this, this project, I've been awoken at quarter to six in the morning, two Saturdays ago, called the hospital. They have never called me back. They're not sympathetic to the neighbors' needs. And if any of you have ever been to a big hospital in a big city, University of Penn, you go through neighborhoods and the homes that were once absolutely beautiful, like ours are on Arthur Avenue, have this plaque in front of it saying what hospital, building it is. And I'm assuming that probably in about 10 years, I don't know if I'll be there, but in 10 years, that's going to be my house with a plaque saying it's some kind of business for, for Geisinger. And as Attorney Skakidi said, you, you people were elected to serve the neighborhoods, the people that put you into office. Scranton is unique as far as our neighborhoods are concerned. We have wonderful people who are raising children. My two children went to Audubon and I've loved my neighborhood and I appreciate you as elected officials, being concerned about your neighbors and I pay a lot of taxes and so do all of my neighbors. And I would just appeal to you from my heart, as a resident from Scranton, that neighborhood, I can guarantee it, will not be there in 20 years if you don't do the right thing. And I've really nothing against Geisinger than the fact they don't call me back and it's, they've created a huge problem up there. All of the people that are working there right now, parking back of the museum, have taken every single lot in back of the museum for their own needs. And I, I can't believe that neighbors haven't complained, I can't believe that the museum hasn't complained. The, most of these workers, I can guarantee, aren't even from Scranton. I go out with my dogs every day and I look at these trucks and I'm thinking, how dare them park in the lots that were reserved for city residents? It's appalling. It's appalling that I pay the kind of taxes I pay and all of my neighbors pay and we're, we don't get anything back from the city. The condition that the city is in right now, and I'm not going to get started with this because I'm too passionate about it, have literally almost forced people to sell their homes and get out. We have the most beautiful homes in the most beautiful neighborhoods. Please respect it. Please vote the right way. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Richard Jones, 421 Arthur Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania. As Attorney Skakidi indicated earlier, back in the early 90s, Mayor Wenzel had appointed me to the City Planning Commission. And on the four years that I was on the Planning Commission, almost the entire time was spent developing our new city master plan and city zoning ordinance, which has withstood the test of time over the last 20 years. I bought my home in December 1981. I'm the third owner of a 101-year-old house. Nine-foot ceilings, pocket doors, fantastic property. My house is directly either behind or in front of, depending upon how you want to look at it, Mr. Reese's property in the 400 block of Colfax. So his house is directly next to the Audubon School. So the backyard of my house faces the side of the Audubon School. The school district was in the process and had spent millions of dollars renovating Audubon, which is an approximately 100-year-old grade school. They had just put a new roof on the school and they were working with Peter's Engineering to do other renovations to it when they mysteriously discovered this mold problem, which unfortunately shut down our neighborhood school where my oldest son had attended. Three of my four children were born at CMC. It was a neighborhood hospital. Our area is residential. The school was grandfathered under our master plan and zoning ordinance because it was already there, just like our 100-year-old homes have been there. My wife and I have a combined income of approximately $150,000. I live next to two school teachers who have a combined income in excess of $100,000. Ed Skakidi lives next to them. He's an attorney in the city for over 30 years, as long as I've lived in that neighborhood. Gene Barrett and his wife are next to the Skakidys. Gene's a former member of city council and runs the Scranton Sewer Authority. Next to Gene is a young family, young couple with a young son, three or four years old, just brought, bought their property a couple of years ago from Bobby Osborne. We have a terrific neighborhood. Since I've lived in Scranton, I've seen at least three, if not four hospitals close in Lackawanna County. We lost our two hospitals in Carbondale. We're probably in the process of losing Mid Valley Hospital and we've lost Scranton State Hospital. That, I know, under, under those conditions and with our aging population, puts a lot of pressures on the existing facilities that serve our area. However, without residents paying taxes, we're not going to need hospitals. So I implore you to respect the work of your predecessors on city council who adopted the city's master plan and zoning ordinance and keep our area residential. As Ed said, we, we spend an inordinate amount of money on our taxes, our wage taxes, our real estate taxes, and we've preserved that neighborhood over these last 30 or so years and we'd like to be able to continue to preserve it. It's a wonderful place to live. We've got the nicest city park in the city directly across the street from us. That whole character, that whole fabric will be lost if the encroachment starts coming north. They're already growing south, they're already growing west. They can't come across into Naog. If they could, they would. So please do the right thing as, as our speakers have said and maintain the character of our neighborhood. Thank you.
If counsel please, I'm Drew Hailstone. I represent Geisinger. I just want to clear up the record. We are required to provide proof of notice that was sent to the neighbors. That's been delivered to the zoning officer and I want the, the record here to have a copy of the proof of notice. I'd also call to your attention that both the City Planning Commission and the County Regional Planning Commission have recommended this adoption. And the interesting thing about the County Regional Planning Commission report, which city council has, is their opinion that when the ordinance was passed in 1993, the Audubon site should have been zoned general institution because it was occupied by an active school. Keep in mind that this site is surrounded on three sides by streets, two streets and a court. A lot of what you've heard this evening is speculation. This is an opportunity that has come to Geisinger rather than something that they sought, as Mr. Markowski said. If Geisinger doesn't acquire it, what then? School district is out $750,000 and an empty moldering building remains. But more important than that, in the 21st century, this community needs adequate healthcare. And as Mr. Markowski said, facilities adjacent to the hospital are important to the proper working of the hospital. And one last thing, if you look at the zoning ordinance, there's a very limited number of things that can be done in a general institution district. By making a general institution, you're not giving the hospital carte blanche. There are very few permitted uses, very few. And any plan would have to be reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this issue? If not, this public hearing is adjourned.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for all those who have passed away in our community during the past week. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Loscom?
Mr. Gaw?
Here.
Mr. McGough? Here. Let the record reflect that Mr. Loscom did call earlier and that he was not feeling well and will be unable to attend this evening's meeting.
Due to, due to Mr. Loscom's absence, I would like to make a motion to appoint Councilman Gawhan, temporary chair for the Committee on Public Safety.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so move. Dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A Lackawanna County Planning Commission subdivision and land development evaluation received on April 9, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B Agenda for the City Planning Commission meeting to be held May 28, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Are there any clerks?
Nothing, Mr. McGough.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Do any council members have announcements? I would like to make mention of two things. First, on the agenda, there are two pieces of legislation that will be taken from the table and placed in seventh order. They were the subject of the two public hearings held prior to the meeting. Also, I would like to make note that we did take from our agenda for this week legislation dealing with leases of Little League and baseball fields in West Scranton. I, I just wanted to make note that there have been some rumors that somehow the administration and city council were somehow involved in giving these leases inappropriately to people and that we were depriving some children of the playing on these fields. That is totally untrue. What had, what had taken place is that Attorney Schreiber, the city solicitor, met with representatives of all of the, the various concerns, spoke with them and put together leases that we felt everyone, that he felt everyone had agreed to. It seems as though there is some disagreement now with the leases and it is council's position and also the administration's position that we will not put anything on our agenda that the respective organizations have not agreed to. It is up to them to formulate a method for field use and when they have determined that it's something that benefits the children of that community and that they can agree to, then we will put the leases back on the agenda for approval. It is not our concern to take sides on any of this. This is up to the adults in those respective organizations to do what is best for the children of West Scranton. As I said, when that is done, then we will respond.
Good evening, counsel. Joan Hodawanitz, Scranton resident. Do we have any information on whether or not Mr. Amaroso is planning another presentation and if so, when?
I'm unfortunately going to give you the same answer that I've been giving you. I am told that yes, by the, it keeps being, like, by the end of the month.
Okay.
In two weeks.
Well, he will not fall off my radar.
There has not been a specific date established.
He will not fall off my radar screen. I'll keep watching for that. With regard to 5G, the acquisition installation of a community surveillance network, I haven't seen any background information which would tell me, are you going to be maintaining storage of images that are shared? Where and how are you going to store them? Who would have access to them? Is that information going to be made public before you decide on this program? Does anybody have any information on that? I, I understand the basic concept. My concern is the privacy of the citizens, okay? And are you going to maintain? As somebody who worked in the intelligence community for 23 years and spent three years at the National Security Agency, I will tell you that the technology exists to abuse that information. So certainly, we should have access to the plan. What are you going to do with these images? Who will have access to them? How long will they be stored?
This has been a question in the past as well, as to the utilization and operation of this type of equipment. I am not sure what the plan is as to how it will be utilized or stored, you know, whatever the case may be. the case may be. But we will make that query for you.
I hope that you would at least go back to the administration and see what the plan is. And I think the plan should be available before the decision is made. It's not that I am against the acquisition of this system. It's that I would like to have a plan in place and that the public can see what their plan is before we end up going down the road. And it is something to think about, okay? You may think, oh, well, you know, we're just a little backward city, you know, nothing ever happens here, you know, that kind of thing. That's not true. You know, people should guard their privacy very jealously, and there should be very strict guidelines on when, you know, those images can be taken, what can be done with them, who can see them, for how long. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, Justine.
I'm Justine Yeager, a librarian at the Albright Memorial Library, and I'm here to invite you and all of you to the library's annual block party fundraiser, Swingin' on Vine. This event will be held tomorrow, Friday, May 23rd, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. $15 in advance and 20 at the door will get you three hours of unlimited food and drinks, chances to win awesome raffle prizes, and live music from Paula Bell and the exact change. All raffle prizes are donated by local businesses, including gift cards and baskets from Market Street Bar and Grill, Steamtown Hot Yoga, Lehi Family Fun Park, San Bluka Bar and Grill, and even an overnight stay at the Cleland House, and antique adorned bed and breakfast in the Historic Hill section of Scranton. These are just a handful of our great prizes, and in fact, none of our prizes are valued at less than $50, and with a couple of exceptions, raffle tickets are only a dollar apiece. Like our raffle prizes, all food is donated by local restaurants and organizations, and this year, thanks to the Lackawanna College's Culinary Arts Degree Program, we're excited to feature a southwestern menu to go along with our signature drink, the Margarita. We'll also have yummy desserts from Manuka Pastry Shop, Gertrude Hawk, Rita's Water Ice, and many more, including contributions by staff, and they are very, there are a lot of talented bakers, I have to say. Now, many of you may have noticed that the Albright building is being renovated, and we'd like to take a moment and thank the city for partnering with us on the Keystone Grant, which will ensure that the building remains an architectural gem in the community for years to come. Proceeds from Swingin' on Vine will help to defray some of the renovation costs and benefit the Albright Memorial Library, Nancy K. Holmes Branch, and the Lackawanna County Children's Library so that we may continue to provide the highest quality collections and services to the community free of charge. This means everything from DVDs and Blu-rays to eBooks and free internet access and Wi-Fi. And of course, we're always adding new titles to our fantastic print collection. Don't forget, we also have programs for children, teenagers, and adults. So we are very much hoping to see all of your faces tomorrow night at Swingin' on Vine, and you can get tickets at the Albright Memorial Library, Nancy K. Holmes Branch, and the Library Express in Steamtown Mall, or you can go online to lclshome.org/swingin-on-vine. And if you want more information, you can call or visit our website. So tomorrow night, rain or shine, Swingin' on Vine, 5:00 to 8:00. All right, thank you very much.
And we will refer to the 10.
Thank you.
Fay Frannis?
Fay Frannis, Scranton. Mr. McGough, may I ask Pat Rogan a question?
Sure.
Pat, when Sapa was on the agenda before, a couple of years ago, whatever, you were against that, weren't you?
Yes.
May I ask you why you were against it?
A number of reasons, some of them being the costs weren't defined, and frankly, I didn't believe, and I still don't believe, that it's something that really will benefit the city.
And Jack Loscom felt the same way?
Correct.
I just hope that both of you still feel strongly against it, because I see no reason for Sapa to come to the city of Scranton. If any business wants to come to Scranton, there's nothing stopping them.
And I voted yes to introduce it.
For me?
I voted yes to introduce it to allow debate, but
That's why I
And I did mention that I am, you know, I'm going to listen to the residents, but I am leaning towards voting no.
But I see no reason for it whatsoever, and I can't even comprehend why anybody in this council representing the people in Scranton would want this. Anybody, the reason they don't come to Scranton's business is because the taxes are so high. It's not because of any other reason. So there's nothing stopping any business from coming here. As a matter of fact, that Delta Medics is going to Dunmore. How is Sapa helping them stay? They're not. The other municipalities, Clark Summit, Waverly, see, Scranton has all the social services. They have all, and all the buildings, and the federal buildings, the courthouse buildings, all the nonprofits and the projects in the city. Clark Summit and Waverly don't want projects. They want their places to be green and nice and open. What the plan is for is to stop sprawl. So I hope that Scranton, the City Council, who represents the people in the city, do not adopt that, because we do not need it. If anybody wants to come here, they can. Thank you, Mr. Rogan. Now, another matter, I listened to what Mauricio Macher said last week about that financial group that you hired until 2018, and she asked a question of Mr. Menore, and Mr. McGough, you didn't let him answer. I mean, if it's a legal question, why wouldn't you want the lawyer for the council to answer?
She asked why we voted for it.
She asked if it was legal. And you answered.
She asked if I felt it was legal, yes.
But she also asked Mr. Menore, and he wasn't able to answer. I just think when there's a legal question, the lawyer should be able to answer the people. That's what he's there for. And you said it was legal because there will be money in the budget for it in 2015, where there's no money in this budget for it, and this is the time in that amendment that it says the money should be allocated now when it is voted on, not a year from now. So yes, it is illegal, even though you say it isn't. And I want the people at home to know that just because you say something, Mr. McGough, it doesn't mean it's so, because, trust me, you don't know. Laugh, we'll find out. We'll find out. And another thing, last week, when you made a comment about you moved something to seventh order like you are tonight, not that this is law or anything, but it's up to you, I guess, but I think it'd be fair if you had people like, say, for example, I wanted to speak on that item. I don't think I should have to talk about it in my five minutes in motions. Your meetings are over like an hour anymore. I mean, I don't know where your rush is to get out of here. I just think it'd be fair if you had people that want to speak on something in seventh order that's being moved ahead, to have a chance to speak before the vote, not while their time in the public comment time. They should be allowed to speak two times. Well, what do you think about that, Mr. McGough?
Citizens' participation is the time for public comment on agenda items.
So you're saying that you don't
And it was made known that
For me?
And it was made known that anyone who wished to speak to those items should do so during citizens' participation.
So you don't want, think they should maybe to speak again on it? Because most people don't know you're going
No one spoke to it the first time, so I
People don't know when they come here. Most people have their, what they're going to say ready, and that usually takes five minutes. So people don't know that you're going to move something to seventh order until you say so that night. So they need a little time to think about it and prepare. I think they should be allowed to speak again on the issue.
We made it known the week before that it was going to be moved.
Well, did you let this, was it known for tonight that this was going to be moved? The items you're talking about tonight, the move to seventh order, did you let that be known last week?
Um
Or is it just tonight, right before the meeting? Is that when you first said it?
I don't remember offhand.
Oh, that sounds convenient.
Well, yeah, it is convenient, because that's the answer I have.
So basically, you don't, what you're trying to do is you don't want the people to have too much to say, because you're cutting their time. Another thing, last week, you had a caucus in the back room about Verizon moving to cell towers. Another thing, you don't want the people at home that's watching council on television to see what's going on. There's no transparency, there's no reason in the world why you wouldn't have, you shouldn't have people out here during the caucus on important issues such as the Verizon cell towers or any other important issue. I mean, to me, it's just stopping the public from knowing what is going on in the city deliberately.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address council?
Andy Spragley, says fellow Scrantonians. A few words on Sapa. I know you all made up your mind proudly which way you're going on that, but I can't see how you make sense without including Dixon City, Taylor, and Music as part of the group. As you know, the way they're doing it is not the best interest of our community. We're going to have to go to Music, Dixon City, and Taylor for some type of a commuter tax. You know that, I know that, everybody knows that. So start reaching out to them communities now, because there's nothing else you can do. You're not going to go with Chapter 9, which is probably the best way to go at the position we're in. We are bankrupt. Everybody that comes to me says we are bankrupt. You cannot pay off the loan to the firemen and police awards, and they're growing at over $100,000 a month up, and you sit there and close your eyes to it. But, Mr. McGough, you close your eyes to a lot of things that happened in your watch. We are in the position we're in now is because of you and the times. Didn't realize what was happening, didn't care what was happening, but went blindly what the mirror was doing. When that council came four years ago, there was $22 million in debt sitting on the books. Under your watch, they were occurred, and you sit there and close your eyes to what's happening to the city. I can't understand people, like I say. You cannot vote your party or your name. You got to look at each candidate individually and vote on their merits, not what name they bear or what party they belong to, if you ever want to get out of the mess we're in. Well, let's a few words on the commuter, this entertainment tax. That lady come before you for the library, would she be exempt from this tax if it was passed, or would she be required to pay? They're charging people admission to go to this affair. Is it? The same with a political. I went to a lot of political where they had entertainment, and at the door, they were looking for political contributions. Are they exempt from this tax?
Mr. Spragley, what we are doing is we're trying to make it easier to collect by making it, if you were a group of less than 500, you're not subject to the tax.
For a group of 500?
For an establishment that has less than 500 seats.
I didn't quite say in there, but all groups that are under 500 are exempt.
Correct.
Which means there's only, what, two or three things in the city that actually can be taxed.
A few more than
One is the water park, and the other is the Masonic Temple. And I think that other thing that they have is up in Music, that belongs to Music up there and not Scranton. And the ballpark, of course, isn't in Scranton either. So you got, you're actually trying to get these two entities to play for a big bunch of taxes. I don't know if that's going to work.
There are other venues that have over 500 capacity.
Name one.
The hotels in the city.
The hotels
The rooms, the banquet facilities.
The hotels are already taxed by the county. You're planning to tax a wedding, say? Is that what you're planning to tax? Because you may have 500 people at a wedding.
Mr. Spragley, if I could just jump in, this isn't any, this tax is already on the books. What we are doing is Councilman Wexler and myself were approached by bar owners and band owners who are being negatively impacted by the tax. What this exemption does, when this was passed, it was never the intention to have people who are going to see a local band at a local tavern pay a tax. This would give them a de facto exemption because their venue is smaller than 500. Now, if you go up to Montage to see a national act, you would, the tax would be included, or at the cultural center when they have, when they have large venues as well. But this is not an additional tax, this is an exemption and a current tax.
I realize that. When you passed the tax the first time, it wasn't very good, and we brought all these objections up to you at that point. At this point, you're clarifying it, but not really clarifying it, you didn't change the wording. I don't, it's not in this, maybe in the backup. It's spelled out a little different. But I can see a lot of people are going to be very unhappy, especially with things like the Fest of Italian. Now, that's a big deal. That has hundreds of thousands of people may come there. What are we going to do with that?
It's for ticketed venues. It has to be a ticketed venue. So the Italian festival, you don't pay a ticket to go in, so they wouldn't pay the tax. It's mostly, mostly for concerts is where most of the revenue on an amusement tax comes in. And the issue that we're addressing is that the local, the small venues, the corner bar that has, you know, a local band play and charges $5 at the door, we don't think they should be forced to pay this tax. That's why we worked on this exemption. You know, neighborhood festivals, things like, they're not subject to the tax. And I know there, already an exemption was carved out for educational. If a school, say Westside High School, wanted to have an event, they were already exempt, and I believe nonprofits are exempt as well. So this is just trying to correct a mistake that was in the original legislation, and I think it solves, you know, one of the problems that was hurting the little guy, and we didn't want to hurt the local music industry and the taverns in the city.
Good evening. Dave Thompson, resident, I place myself here. I sing on some time going by. Once again, I'd like to express the hope that the audit comes in, if not on time, but at least by midsummer. It's, the last few years have been insufferable and almost useless to even have it at that time. We had a vote a few days ago, and, well, once again, for a turnout, I wish people would wake up and get out and vote. Must be disconcerting to a politician in realizing that if the majority showed up, he could be voted out of office even though he won by a landslide. Towers. I'm neutral on those towers up at Naug Park, but we have towers at Naug Park, and I'll have to get in touch with the taxpayers or somebody with more resources and see what we can do about finding out whether PP&amp;L is paying their fair share, because they're taking a considerable swath out of the park. They have power transmission towers right through it, and I would almost find it doubtful that somebody would scream that from the rooftops that they are paying. And a few years ago, with the Roseland project, I asked them about it, one of the officials, I attended a meeting, and they mentioned that it would take millions of dollars to remove, to relocate those towers. So there's a lot of money there. And once again, you poor guys get the dirty end of the stick with the Geisinger issue. I was watching, watching it from my house until I had to leave and to get here. And there are concerns. That school should never have been closed. Shame on the school district that shut that down, and $750,000 is not really good compensation for the loss of a school. That could have been fixed for six or seven million. It's really a shame, and those kids from the Hill section and South Scranton are getting shipped and shuffled all over the place. The one lady had a letter in there that her child was in the fourth grade, and she hadn't attended the same school any given year. So that was four different schools she was located in in four years. So I don't know how I feel about them tearing that down and putting it in the parking lot. I would sympathize with those neighbors. On this issue with seventh order, I would consider just allowing people to go up and speak. I wouldn't want to put up with the grief I wouldn't want to put up with the grief that you're getting over it. It's really a shame that we can't take two or three more minutes per person and just let them have their say. Dinner, they can't. They'll probably just come up and complain some more. At least they had their opportunity. On parties, what do you do when one party is lame and the other one is crazy? I don't know. That goes with voting. It's really a shame, but there are some crazy people in certain parties, and the other one don't know how to run a party. Drill, baby, drill. They should have had, when one party was chanting that during that oil spill, they should have had a, their commercial should have been the oil spill in Louisiana. Which brings me to the, to the Golden Parrot. I know it's national, but it is local. We had the mines under our houses, and now we get to pay for insurance that we would have never needed, because some dishonest jerk took the coal out from under our house. Congressman McAllister was badgering an environmental activist who was there to complain that an oil company repaired an oil leak on wildlife preservation with duct tape and a garbage bag. And he's from Louisiana. I mean, how crazy can you get? I wouldn't vote at all if I had two people like that running. Thanks, and have a good night.
Anyone else who wishes to address council?
Good evening, gentlemen. Sean Finn, West Scranton. I was thrilled to hear tonight that you've taken the leases off the agenda, and I'm thrilled to hear that council is going to wait until we can work something out. I'm here for Little League, and this was kind of dropped on us at the last minute. The rumors, I don't know where the rumors came from. We did take to social media, we did pass a petition, but it's all we knew to do. I mean, I'm just a baseball coach, I'm just a dad, I'm not a politician, I'm not a lawyer. It's what we do. But I really appreciate all of you, Mr. Rogan reaching out to us, Mr. Gohhan reaching out to us, and, you know, the mayor gave us great advice, Mr. Shrive gives great advice, and we're going to try to sit down with the other parties, work this out, and hopefully everybody's happy in the end. But I appreciate everything you guys have done for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to address council?
Fifth order, five B motions.
Mr. Wexler? Thank you, Mr. McGough. To touch on a little bit, as we were speaking before during public comment, tonight we are going to modify the amusement tax. Councilman Rogan and myself, Business Administrator Strater Balzoni, Solicitor Jason Shrive, and City Council Solicitor Menora, we've been working on this probably since we took our seats in January. We really feel that this modification will allow the smaller businesses not to suffer from an additional tax that really was a burden to them. And the other side of the coin also, it allows the city to move this down to the single tax office, where we can actually start collecting some of this revenue. We do have it budgeted for about $300,000 in our budget this year, and, like I said, this will allow us to start collecting that. There's a couple other bits of legislation ordinance that are on the books that we're gonna try to do the same thing with. This is the first one that we started with. A couple other things, I'd like to thank the organizers of the Armed Forces Day Parade on Saturday. We got to see the city. My sister visited from Maryland, and she didn't know she was gonna end up in the parade on Saturday, so she got to march in the whole parade. There was a good turnout along Washington Avenue of people to offer their support. I was in the parade last year, I thought there was more people this year, but it really is great, and we do have to appreciate our veterans, because we lose so many of them every day. On Sunday night, I had the honor of representing the city as benevolent, honored Mayor Dave Wenzel as their, with their Americanism Award. Mayor Wenzel is a special person. He was handicapped in Vietnam, did not let that deter him. He came back, served his city as mayor, and I believe tax collector, went on to serve on several commissions under President Bush, and continues today to do his work throughout the city, and I was honored to have dinner with him on Saturday. Just one other thing I'd like to mention, one of the speakers talked about Delta Medics moving to Dunmore. I can tell you that no decision by Delta Medics has been made on that yet. The city, other private investors, and Dunmore, this is gonna be a competition for the city. We're all gonna have to work very hard at making sure that we try our best to keep Delta Medics here in Scranton, and saying that they moved to Dunmore is not gonna help us. So, we'd like to have support from the public, whatever you can do to try to convince them to stay, but that's what we're gonna have to do, it's gonna have to be a team effort. That's all I have, Mr. McGough.
Thank you.
Mr. Rogan?
Thank you. A few items. I'd like to first start off by thanking city employee Paul O'Hora and ECTV volunteer Charlie Newcomb Jr. There was an emergency on Tuesday, Election Day, which City Hall was closed, and for those of you who watched the election results on Channel 19, you saw that they were broadcast from council chambers. Thanks to our city clerk getting in touch with Mr. O'Hora, Mr. Newcomb, they were able to get City Hall opened up so they could broadcast those election results. So a thank you to all three of you for the great work on your day off for Mrs. Reed and Mr. O'Hora. So we thank you for that, and Charlie, as always, does a great job operating the cameras. I'd also like to congratulate all the candidates from the election on Tuesday, especially like to congratulate my state rep Marty Flynn on an enormous victory, and our new state rep in part of Scranton, Representative Frank Farina, who will now be representing Scranton. So we look forward to working with him as well. A couple comments regarding the West Scranton baseball fields, and this is an issue that's important to me, because as a kid, I played on these fields. So to me, it's important to see that the younger generation has the same opportunity that I had, to go in and to play baseball in their community. So, I know we have all received a lot of calls and emails, and on Election Day, I was at the polls in my neighborhood in Westside, and every parent that came up said, "Pats, what's happened with the baseball fields?" So I'm glad, you know, that you all reached out to us, and I'm hopeful that an agreement will work out that works, so kids that play baseball can play baseball, and kids that play football can play football. And that's what it's all about at the end of the day, doing what we can for the kids. On the amusement tax, Mr. Wexler summed it up perfectly. We were both approached by bands and bar owners, who were upset that they would have to pay this tax. And it wasn't, when it was passed, it was never intended for the local band and the local bar owner to be affected by this tax. It was implemented to offset the cost of large venues. For instance, when Montage Mountain has a venue, and Montage is in Scranton, and we do receive revenue from that venue, there is a large cost associated with a concert where you have 10,000 people at. That was the, the point of the amusement tax was to offset that cost. At no point did anyone involved ever want to hurt our local music scene, which is great. There are a lot of great local bands in our community, and I had the pleasure of talking to many of the musicians in those bands and the bar owners. And, you know, myself and Councilman Wexler, our attorney, the city attorney, the mayor, we all worked together to solve this problem, so that the local bar owners and the local bands weren't hurt by this tax. And, as also mentioned, it will make it easier for it to be collected by the venues that do have to pay the tax, the larger venues. Two other things, the Armed Forces Parade, I agree, it was a pretty good crowd this year, a little bit better than the year before. Hopefully that will continue to grow. It was great seeing, talking to many veterans and many residents in downtown, it was a beautiful day, and hopefully next year's attendance will be a little bit higher. I was gonna wait until motions to speak on regarding the property in the Hill Section with being purchased. I am going to vote yes for the zoning change, for a number of reasons. One of the main reasons is, we have a building there that if it's not purchased, it may sit there vacant for who knows how long. There's certainly no shortage of vacant buildings in the city of Scranton, and the last thing we need is another one. Secondly, the school district certainly needs the revenue. Some members of the school board are talking about raising taxes, and $700,000 could certainly offset some of that on the school board's end. Third, the city will receive tax revenue. Once this, once this transaction is completed, what will happen is, a property that was non-taxable for many, many years as a school will now become taxable, which is nice, because usually it's going the other way around, where taxable property is becoming tax exempt. And finally, and this is the strongest argument I have for supporting it, is, in the city of Scranton, in the last 10 years, one of the industries, and it's not really an industry, but one of the categories of employment that's done pretty well is medical field. We have a new medical college, which has been great for the city, and we have great hospitals in the city. I think that's something the city of Scranton needs to embrace and use to build on. We want young doctors moving into the city, buying homes in the city, and raising a family in the city. And we want good services at our hospitals for the senior citizens and the younger people in the community that need those services. So for those reasons, I do support the change in the zoning to allow the purchase of this property to go through. I do see the other side, where some residents can be concerned about sprawl, but in this specific instance, we're taking a building that was used as a school. So there already was a lot of, you know, hustle and bustle there with buses coming and going, teachers coming and going, and turning that into a medical use, which I think will be good for, good for the city, good for business, and hopefully the medical industry in the city continues to draw people here, in the medical school. And the hope is, that when students come and come to the medical school, they'll come here and work in our hospitals, and take care of the residents in the city of Scranton. And because of those reasons, I will be voting yes for the zoning change. That's all. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. On Monday, May 26, which is Memorial Day, the DPW will be off, and refuse and Blue Recycling will be a day behind. On Thursday, May 29, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., the city of Scranton will have a tire recycling event. The cost is $2 per passenger tire and $3 for SUV or pickup tire. The tires must be residential only, and all tires must be without rims. Anyone wishing to recycle tires are asked to bring them to the Department of Public Works, which is located at 101 West Poplar Street. I am happy to report that we are making some progress with the parking issue that I've brought up the past two weeks in the 900 block of Prescott Avenue. The police department conducted a parking study this past week. Based on the study and the parking complaints from residents, council will be proceeding to a public forum as per city ordinance. I'd like to thank Police Chief Carl Graziano and Attorney Amel Menora for their assistance with this matter. I received a complaint from a resident about some dangerous potholes in the 800 block of Crown Avenue in South Scranton. I will forward that request to our DPW director. I'd also like to mention that three eighth-grade students from West Scranton Intermediate School won third prize in a contest sponsored by C-SPAN. The contest was called Student Cam, where students had to create a documentary. The documentary these students created was called Commit Support to Veterans. It was very impressive. The students will be honored Friday, May 30, at West Intermediate School, where C-SPAN representatives will be honoring them with the ceremony. I would like to congratulate these students for being recognized by C-SPAN and representing the city of Scranton very well. Just to echo the comments from Mr. Rogan and Mr. Wexler, the Armed Forces Day Parade was a great success this past Saturday. It was an honor to watch the men and women march who have served our country throughout the years. There was a nice crowd in attendance, and I thank everyone for coming out. I urge everyone to continue to support these veterans and thank them for all that they have done. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, to reiterate what the young lady said, please come out tomorrow evening for Swinging on Vine. Great opportunity to support the Albright Library. Our library system is, I would say, second to none, and the Albright Library itself is a beautiful building that needs to be preserved, and anything we can do to help support the Albright Library certainly is a good thing. So please, if you have the opportunity, please come to the Albright Library tomorrow evening and support it. Just a couple of responses to things that were mentioned. As far as the audit is concerned, there has been, I think it was mentioned last week, there has been a transfer of an employee from the controller's office to the business administrator's office that should speed up the process. They have, they are behind simply because of a staffing issue, but hopefully with additional, additional help, the audit, the audit process will accelerate through the next couple of months, and hopefully will be completed sooner than it has in the past couple of years. And I would like, as far as the citizens' participation and opportunity to speak at our meetings, no one has been denied their right to speak to council. I believe that we are as transparent and as open as any council has been in the past. And I believe that our weekly caucus is an opportunity for the public too, a greater opportunity for the public to see what is taking place with council. Prior four years, we didn't have a weekly caucus, so it was very often people came to the meeting without any idea of what might be taking place. I think that we have opened it up quite a bit, to allow people to see what's going on with city council. And, the last thing, as far as citizens' participation, our application of the, I'll say, guidelines for speaking are extremely liberal. If one were to look at rules of council and the administrative code, Home Rule Charter, there are specific guidelines to be followed for citizens' participation, which basically says you can speak to agenda items and matters of concern to the city. We have, I would say, applied that very liberally in allowing people to speak to council. So, I don't think that we are denying anyone their opportunity to speak, and, actually, we encourage anyone to come to council, to speak to us, to voice their concerns. They would be more than welcome. And that's all. Thank you.
5B for introduction and ordinance, creating and establishing special city account number as noted, entitled Community Surveillance Network System for the receipt and disbursement of grant funds received for the acquisition and installation of the Community Surveillance Network System at Scranton Police Headquarters.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second?
On the question, to respond to one of the citizens' concern, I will have, or ask Mr. Lascom if he would look into, since that is his committee, if he would look into the plan for usage for that equipment. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move.
5C for introduction and ordinance, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant application, and if successful, a grant agreement and accept the funds related thereto through the BJAFY14 Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant JAG Program, local solicitation in the amount of $23,898.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second?
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move.
5D for introduction and ordinance, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to enter into a lease agreement with the Scranton School District for use of city-owned property in connection with approved Westside High School soccer teams for a three-year period commencing April 15, 2014, and ending April 14, 2017.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second?
On the question, I would like to make note that this involves soccer teams- On the question, I would like to make note that this involves soccer teams, that they have agreed to the leases that, with the city, and therefore, we are, it is included on our agenda, and we will vote on it. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, and so move.
5E for introduction and ordinance, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to enter into a lease agreement with the Scranton Youth Soccer for the use of city-owned property in connection with approved Scranton Youth Soccer for a three-year period commencing April 15, 2014, and ending April 14, 2017.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second?
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, and so move.
5F for introduction and ordinance, amending file of the Council Number 75, 2012, and ordinance as amended entitled An Ordinance to Provide Revenue for the City of Scranton by imposing a tax upon the privilege of attending or engaging in non-exempt amusements, including every form of entertainment, diversion, sport, recreation, and pastime, requiring all persons, partnerships, associations, and corporations conducting places of amusements, imposing duties and conferring powers upon the treasurer of the city of Scranton, prescribing the method and manner of collecting the tax imposed by this ordinance, and imposing penalties for the violation thereof by amending Section 4, Definitions, Place of Amusement.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second?
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, and so move.
5G for introduction and resolution ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton Police Department from the 2013-2014 JAG Single Solicitation Local Initiative Program for the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $146,390 for the city of Scranton Police Department for financial support for the acquisition and installation of the Community Surveillance Network, a 32-monitor video wall located at Scranton Police Headquarters to create a system in which all surveillance of cooperating agencies will be shared in a live feed to the Scranton Police Department, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant if successful and disperse the grant funds for the city of Scranton Police Department acquisition and installation of the Community Surveillance Network System.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second?
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, and so move.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of the Council Number 22, 2014, and ordinance, amending file of the Council Number 26, 2013, and ordinance entitled, amending file of the Council Number 22, 2006, entitled Authorizing and Approving the Designation of Parking Spaces for Certain City of Scranton Personnel in and Along Dix Court, the parking area in the rear of the Scranton Municipal Building, and a parking lot along Mulberry Street adjacent to Scranton Fire Headquarters, and authorizing the city of Scranton Police Department to enforce the parking designations as reflected in the attached schematic by adding an additional parking space behind Scranton Fire Headquarters and re-designating certain parking spaces to reflect the change in which some City of Scranton personnel currently park as reflected in the attached schematic.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that Item 6A pass reading by title.
Second?
On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, and so move.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, file of the Council Number 18, 2014, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to enter into lease agreements with various Little League, Teenage League, Missy League, and Junior Football League associations for use of city-owned property in connection with approved Little League, Teenage League, Missy League, Farm League, T-Ball League, and Junior Football League activities for a three-year period commencing April 15, 2014, and ending April 14, 2017.
As Chair for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second?
On the question, I would like to point out that these leases are with organizations that have agreed to the provisions of the leases, and again, therefore, we have included them on the agenda for passage. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, Resolution Number 57, 2014, accepting a donation of a used commercial-grade stove, commercial-grade stainless steel sink, and work island from Titan Tree Service presented to the City of Scranton Fire Department for installation at Fire Headquarters.
What is the recommendation of the temporary chair for the Committee on Public Safety?
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second?
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted, and thank the Titan Tree Service for their donation.
I would like to make a motion to take file of Council Number 11, 2014, as amended from the table.
Second?
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, and so move.
7C, previously tabled for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, file of the Council Number 11, 2014, as amended, amending file of Council Number 74, 1993, as amended, entitled City of Scranton Zoning Ordinance of 1993, by changing the zoning map designation of the John J. Audubon School from R1A Medium Low Density Residential to INSG General Institutional in the central planning area in the eastern portion of the city of Scranton.
What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of Item 7C as amended.
Second?
On the question?
Yes, Mr. McGough, just a comment. This evening, we heard testimony from the neighbors around this site, and I share their concerns as well. We asked many of the same questions when we had a caucus earlier this year with the representatives from Geisinger. We asked specific questions about concerns about what additional areas may be considered for this type of rezoning, and at that time, we were told that there is no further considerations of any of the other properties around the Audubon site. In addition, part of the county's approval of this plan was, they made a valid point that perhaps when the original zoning ordinance was passed, the Audubon school site probably should have been listed as an institutional zone at that time. So, right now, although it's one of the most difficult decisions I've had to make since I'm here on council, since people said, "I am a neighborhood person, and I am a fiscal person," and I do believe that in this case, this site is best served by putting it back on the tax rolls, having it, being evaluated for future use, and hopefully, eventually returning to a green space. That's what I would like to see it after the project has been completed at the hospital, and perhaps, like I said, I would like to see this to go back to a green space. In addition, as anything would come up further with this, there's going to be all sorts of regulations that the Geisinger will have to go through in terms of planning, zoning, and I would anticipate, just from the turnout that we saw tonight and the commitment tonight, that those people will have serious input on any future development at that facility. So, like I said, this was one of the hardest decisions I had to make so far. Thank you, Mr. McGough.
Yes, I just, I would agree and echo Mr. Wexler's comments. I try to put myself into the neighbors' shoes, so to speak, and I was debating, you know, the negatives and the positives of this whole deal, and voting no means that the school will sit there, and nothing will be done with the school. Voting yes means something will be done. It will be used as a staging area, and then it will be used as green space, and then hopefully, a building will be erected there. I look at the creation of jobs, economic development, as Mr. Rogan stated earlier, $155 million invested by Geisinger into the city of Scranton, $97 million expansion project currently underway. So, that is what I am basing my decision on. Also, today, I had our city clerk, Mrs. Reed, pull from the Licensing and Inspections Department the amount of money that Geisinger has given to the city in permit fees, almost $1 million. I did go up there with a few neighbors, and I looked at that site, and I did see trucks, but I did see trucks from people who live in the city of Scranton, who, there's companies that are in the city of Scranton that are working on that project. So, we are employing some of the trade unions up there also. So, again, as Mr. Wexler said, it's a difficult decision. I sympathize and understand the residents' concerns up in the Hill section in that neighborhood, but I can't base my vote on what might happen in 10 years or 20 years. I can only base my vote on what I have in front of me, and I will be voting yes because of that. So, thank you.
And I will also agree with what my colleagues have said. Many of the concerns that were expressed this evening during the public hearing, I felt were based on supposition, that things that could happen. I believe that the immediate benefits to this far outweigh the supposed drawbacks. And one of the things that was brought up that, you know, I would assume that replacing a, an unusable building with even, if there is construction in the future, would only enhance the property value of the people in that area. I can't see that it would be a detriment to them at all. And, again, because of the fact that benefits right now outweigh the drawbacks, I, too, am planning to vote yes.
I would just reiterate what I mentioned other motions, that I do think that this is a good use for that land, and we have to, you know, we have to continue to support business in the city any way that we can. And for representatives from Geisinger here today, you have a partner in the city. We want to work with you. We work with us. This is how it should be done. Out in the open, you came to our caucus to inform us initially, and throughout the entire process, this is how it should work, and I hope to see the same thing happen with other businesses and even nonprofits in the city. We need that partnership because we need to grow as a city, and I think that this is a good piece of legislation to help that growth.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7C as amended legally and lawfully adopted.
I would like to make a motion to take file of Council Number 17, 2014, from the table.
Second?
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, and so move.
7D, previously tabled for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, file of the Council Number 17, 2014, amending file of the Council Number 47, 2013, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor and Other Appropriate Officials of the City of Scranton to Take All Necessary Actions to Implement the Consolidated Submission for Community Planning and Development Programs to be Funded Under the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program, Home Investment Partnership Home Program, and Emergency Solutions Grants, ESG Program, for the period beginning January 1, 2014, by amending the 2014 Action Plan to Accept the $160,000 requested under the Emergency Solutions Grant Program in the original plan, and an additional $53,519 received under the program to address the needs of homeless people in emergency or transitional shelters for a total grant of
What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of Item 7D.
Second?
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
Any further business? If not, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.